Live streaming and also having a high road meeting if you have some vulnerabilities that I'm about to ask. Please answer by 1-52, please, and then in the end of the page, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Lord Jesus Christ, I pray for divine strength for every leader and all of the leaders throughout Harlingen in this wonderful valley that we live in, that we will not rely on ourselves, but on you. Heavenly Father, your word declares that we will not be afraid or dismayed because you are our God. Right now, Lord, we pray for guidance for every leader. In your name, Lord Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag alongside of the United States of America and to the holy Saint, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to our meeting. This is the first time that we've met in person in over a year. Glad that we're back in this format. Some are joining via Zoom and most people are joining via livestream. We welcome everybody, both here in person and by Zoom. We're doing, the City Commission voted at the last meeting to resume our meetings live in the City Commission chamber, but still with social distancing and masking. Please report that our hospitalizations continue to remain low and very steady. And as long as that continues and not being evacuated, we'll continue to meet in this fashion. So the next item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order, which is being duly supposed to be. And we're going to call the order. There's any citizens standing?
There is none, Mayor.
I want to sign off just in communication. Thank you. First item on the agenda is presentation of proclamations for the following National Historical Preservation Month, National Public Works, try to read these as quickly as can. Is anybody here to receive the National Preservation Month proclamation? All right. All right. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established M.A.S. Historic Preservation Month in 1973 agreed to promote historic places for the purpose of revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering its local pride and community character while enhancing livability. Whereas Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks for the residents of Harlingen and surrounding communities. Whereas preserving our historic resources is vital to ensuring the success of commercial and residential environment and maintaining the character and heritage of the city of Harlingen. Now therefore, I responsibly, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, and on behalf of the Harlingen City Commission, hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as National Preservation Month. Call upon the people of Harlingen to join their fellow citizens across the United States and participate in this special observance. We'll get that to the Rockcoats later. Somebody, Lily or anybody else from the Public Works, come on up here. I want to present this proclamation. I just want to make sure that we all are very National Public Works. We provide public works services throughout our community, our integral park, our citizens every day live. Whereas the support of understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems, programs such as drainage, streets and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, water and wastewater. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of the effectiveness of these facilities, well, their planning, design, and construction are vitally dependent on the efforts, skill of public works officials. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I responsibly, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the week of May 16th into the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week in the city of Harlingen. I call upon citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. I want to present this to you all. You know, these are the kinds of things that I think a lot of people think for granted. You all are out there working for our citizens, day in, day out, really 24/7, every week or after year, making sure the needs of our community are met. A lot of things kind of go unnoticed. In fact, some of the things you do irritate people like tearing up streets and rebuilding, but they like it when they're rebuilt, right? And so it's, those are the vitally important ones. In other than the state of the city, there's, over the last five years, $64 million of public works projects done in this city is an amazing testament to the amazing contributions that our employees and the public works departments, our staff, and the public works department do. So congratulations and thank you for everything that you all did for us. Next item on the agenda is item two, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 21st, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, as our motion to approve the minutes is presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 3A is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right. Item four, presentation by the Finance Director and possible discussion of a plan for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 funding.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. Do you remember on the 21st of April, I came to you with the, a brief explanation of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 funding? And we did say that we would come back with a proposed plan for the use of the fund. So I'll go down to the next one. So just a brief overview, we are allocated $22,125,000 for the American Rescue Plan Funding Act 2021 with a proposed spending deadline of December 31st, 2024. The funding will be distributed in two tranches. The first tranche, which should be, we are expecting next week, May 11th, 2021, where we'll receive approximately half of the funding at $11,62,000. The second tranche will come a year later with the same amount, and that will be May 11th, 2022. Some of the eligible uses are listed out in A, B, C, and D. Some of the restricted uses that you cannot use the funds are on directly reducing or delaying tax increases. So you can't use the funding for that. And you can also cannot fund pension fund, pension plans. So one of the items that is encouraged to be, use the funds on is revenue losses that a municipality may have incurred. And as you have, if you see on the slide, I've listed out different departments and funds that have had revenue losses during 2020 of $2,108,656. And this was determined comparing our 2020 revenues compared to our 2019 revenue. So that is their suggested use of how you calculate the losses. So we've had approximately $2,108,000 in losses for the year.
And I want to point out that that includes general fund, the 4A, the Community Improvement Board, the 4B also, and the golf course sanitation. So all the different funds are listed there, and the revenue losses for each one.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is police, because of shutdown, them issuing out less tickets or court not being held, is that considered a loss of funds? Did we consider that?
Yes, we did consider that through our revenues and our fees and fines, and so that would be in the general.
In general fund.
Yes, sir. Good question. Thank you. Our next item are, items that can be funded are capital improvements and other items.
And I'll go over this, Robert, if you don't mind.
Before you go any further, I do have one question, and I forgot to ask it. On the municipal auditorium, I understand that we had some events that were canceled. I understand that there were patrons that were not fully reimbursed because there was no, there was no mechanism to return fees that were charged to the patrons. And so did we capture that as well, or is that something we didn't know that exists until I just brought it up?
No, we know what you're talking about, Commissioner. That's not a revenue loss, that's a reimbursement for a fee paid. Gabe has more information on that, but I think we would have to put that on the agenda as a separate item.
But I'm talking about this, this fund here. It's when you have losses, it's only the revenue, not anything that was as a result of that?
As a result of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we go back to the other side? Thank you. I printed it up, and I printed it so small, I can't even read it. So some of the capital improvement projects or some of the other projects that we want to fund with, with the monies that we're proposing is reimburse the, for the use of the auditorium. Thank you, Gabe. So as you know, the auditorium was converted to an alternative care facility and an infusion center for the better part of a year, which has been very helpful in the fight against the pandemic. And so the cost for the reimbursement is $800,000. So we propose to do that. I'll move on to the Wi-Fi project. The Wi-Fi project is something that we've been working on for over a year now, and we do have set aside $4 million for that. That is the estimated price tag for Wi-Fi. We are going to go ahead and hire a consultant or bring on a consultant to help us work through our plan and look how we can make sure that our plan meets the needs for the future. And that would include possibly installing fiber optics lines in our city. So we're setting aside $4 million for that. We also like to set aside $4 million for stormwater, which is drainage projects. And then we also like to set aside a little over $10 million and transfer that, convey that over to our Water Works Department for water and sewer project improvements that are needed. We have over $150 million worth of capital water and wastewater improvement projects that are needed over the next few years, and this will help get that, let that started. We do have PowerPoint presentations for the Wi-Fi project, the drainage project, and the Water Works project, and I'll let them go into that. On the essential workers, I am also proposing that, you know, all our employees have done a tremendous job of responding to the pandemic. Food distributions, testing centers, homebound testing, homebound vaccination, vaccination clinics, all, every single one of our employees, every single one of our full-time city and Water Works employees have really stepped up in the fight against this pandemic. So I consider all of the full-time city and Water Works employees as essential workers. As essential workers, I would like to set aside a one-time salary adjustment of $1,000 per employee for all city and Water Works employees. And the estimated cost for that is $894,000. And so how that would work is once we received the first payment next week, we would have to bring that back to the City Commission as a budget amendment. During that budget amendment, we would make the allocations for the employees. It would require two readings, so that one-time payment would be in July of this year. And that would be for, again, all full-time city and Water Works employees, all full-time. And they are, in my opinion, they're all considered essential workers, and they've all participated and really stepped up in the fight against this pandemic. So we can go into the PowerPoints if you need more information on the wastewater, the wastewater project, water projects, stormwater projects, or the Wi-Fi project. We do have detailed presentations on each one.
Thank you, Dan.
Could you put it back up, Sergio? We're not done yet. Thank you.
So our total proposed uses, uses are broken up into revenue losses of $2,108,000 and capital improvement and other items of $20,116,000, which brings us to our total of $22,125,000. So on the first tranche of funding, we propose that it be broken out in this manner. The first tranche will be $11,520,000, and that should go to cover revenue losses, the auditorium, the essential workers, the Wi-Fi project, half of the stormwater project, and a partial of the Harlingen water infrastructure. The second tranche, we propose to fund the second half of the stormwater projects and the remainder to go to the Harlingen Water Works infrastructure. And those two tranches will equal the $22 million. Any questions?
And again, we do have very good PowerPoint presentations that everyone put together. We can go through them in detail.
Can I just get an email there?
Sure. As a matter of fact, did we give them copies of it, Gabe?
Is that this?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's get, let's go on to the PowerPoint presentations on the projects and try to work through those as quickly as we can.
Sergio, you're up first.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers. I'm here to present the M.A.S. City Wi-Fi Project. The goal of the project is to provide Wi-Fi connectivity throughout the city in order to provide, supply access to students, residents, and workforce, and help reach the digital The Harlingen census data from 20, from July 2019 shows that the Harlingen has a total of 21,451 households. 17,425 of those have a computer, and 12,110 have an Internet broadband subscription in their homes. So that leaves 5,415 with no Internet subscriptions. So that's a good data. Three types of services will be provided: in-home broadband connection, direct Wi-Fi connection, and Wi-Fi connection via M.H. network. This map shows the three locations that are going to provide 200, 2 and 1/2 mile radius of Wi-Fi connectivity throughout the city. Deployment of the street-level Wi-Fi access will consist of 1,500 sites that will include utility poles, city parks, and five Harlingen C.I.S.D. locations. On this map, you can see the locations of parks and schools throughout the city. Total cost for the project is $3,726,261.91. This is a list of the M.A.S. items for consideration for funding with the new stimulus. A total of the items is $3,937,020. The next step for us is to hire a consultant to do an in-depth analysis of our city needs and give us options to fiber and Wi-Fi. And that concludes my presentation.
I have a question. On the, I see the maintenance, you're estimating that the maintenance costs $165,000 a year?
Considered 3.
But is that in the 3.7?
Yes, that's included in the first year.
In the first year. So the year after that, we talked to a part of, partner up with the school districts, or anybody, are they going to participate in, are we taking on that maintenance or any future upgrades? Is it a two-year life, four-year life? Because it's technology, right? And it's gonna, it's gonna be, I mean, that might be a question of victory, I understand. And we have to, I think it's, you're going to provide a service, and when it's time to renew that service, where we get the money from? Is it another $4 million that we're going to have to inject, or?
No, the maintenance is something that, that can be negotiated at per call. The first year is already included to have full service 24/7, but the next, the following year is something that we have to determine.
And that's what I'm asking, is that will that consultant be able to answer those questions as far as, here's what we're really getting into, we decided to, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying, the long-term impact on our budget and how we have to pay for that?
And I think long-term, the fiber network is something that we need to look at as a city. I will tell you that I did meet with a gentleman yesterday, I did not tell this to Sergio, that they work for a private company who's looking at installing fiber lines throughout the entire city, including residential areas. And they're looking to begin within the next 12 months.
But that's separate from what?
That's separate from there. So the consultant will tell us what others are doing and what we need to do to make sure that we secure our future. It's not just a kind of a Band-Aid approach, if you will, that we are looking further ahead and making sure that we meet the needs of our community moving forward.
Kind of like when you hit the lottery and they build a big home, and then you can't afford the taxes.
Got to pay taxes. So, but there are going to be fees associated with it, and yeah, and then we can maybe partner with the school district and look for partnerships in other areas to help cover those costs.
Yeah, these are pretty much preliminary numbers that are not set yet.
And there could be a fee, you could, we could.
Potentially charge a fee.
Like the project that we've done at the Housing Authority, that we're doing at the Housing Authority with the Legacy Foundation, those households are paying a small fee, but one that would, is a lot less than, that would pay for market prices, but it would, but it could potentially cover the cost of the annual, of the annual maintenance.
That was my question, is, was this going to be a free or a fee-based? And, you know, the shape of my district is very odd, so as I look at this map, it's probably 50% is inside the city limits and 50% outside our city limits. So here we are as a city, are we going to be supplying free Wi-Fi or a reduced rate Wi-Fi for residents outside of the city? And I do understand that the school district does overlap with us. So, you know, those are things that we would have to address as we get closer to it.
And the school district is providing that Wi-Fi signal, but only as far as their parking lot from their campuses. So you'd have to go to their parking lot at the campus to gain access to the Wi-Fi signal. So we were proposing is a Wi-Fi signal at the streetlights, sending it into the home. You wouldn't need a router. And I'm pretending I know what I'm talking about. I do not. But I, you know, I think hiring a consultant is a good next step for us.
Correct.
But setting aside the monies so that once we have the information, we're ready to move forward and make sure that this project gets going is important. And I think setting aside the $4 million is a good first step.
Absolutely. I mean, without a doubt, it's a wonderful step, especially with what just happened with the pandemic. And, you know, I can see us going into the future, having more Zoom or hybrid-type meetings, not just for the fact of the pandemic, but there are, there are some very good convenience. But I'm, you know, my main concern that I have is looking at this as what Commissioner Udiab is saying with the, the costs later down the road. You know, today we're replacing Wi-Fi systems that are probably five or six years old because we've, we jump and we jump. And so I get it, but I just want to know how we're going to pay for it into the future. And I do know when I was in Seattle, they had connectivity, but it was, it was a, a small fee, and you had to qualify for it. So not every household got it.
Well, we're hoping the consultant can help us answer a lot of those questions.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
I think the overall, kind of the, the big picture on this is that we, we as a city need to begin the process of investing in these type, this type of infrastructure.
It's the future.
It's as, it's as important as electricity and water in the current environment that we're in. And the sooner we start making those investments, the better off I think our city will be in the future. And the idea of trying to also incorporate an expanded fiber optic system would be good for business. It will attract business that, you know, might not otherwise come to our community because they can't tap into fiber optic. Ron Rodell?
That's right.
He's nodding his head.
Well, and I do want to point out, I want to thank Sergio for all the work he's done on getting this project to this point. He's done a lot of research, a lot of phone calls, a lot of meetings to get it to this point, and thank you for all your work, Sergio.
Looks very well thought out, Sergio. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergio.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. I think I go next. Yes, all right. You all received a copy of my presentation, so I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm going to go ahead and get started. The $4 million that were, are being allocated earmarked for drainage projects, 2 million of those are being identified for matching or leveraging funds for grants that we have been working with on the FEMA and TIDAM, Texas Department of Emergency Management. First project is, can you go to the second sheet? The first project is the Jefferson, and again, these drainage projects we brought before you in the past. That one's, is being funded by FEMA and TIDAM at this point for the engineering portion of it. And the second project is Business 77. Again, between those two projects, the total cost is almost $8 million. And so we're leveraging $2 million to, to get $6 million out of that for, for drainage improvements. The other two projects are in-house projects, what I'm noting as in-house projects, projects that we can move forward with. And the first one is the Lozano Street Storm, Stormwater Detention Pond. That one is a 15-acre tract that is owned by the city at the northeast corner of Wichita in Lozano Street, the kind of catty corner to the Kano Middle School, School District's facility. That one in a inner connection on a storm sewer system to be able to bring water from the south side of Fair Park towards the north into this detention pond. And again, I got some exhibits, or you all have exhibits in your, in your, in your packet that you received. The fourth project is the West and Commerce Street Storm Sewer Improvements Rehab Project. And this is going in there and rehabbing the existing storm sewer system that we have along both Commerce Street and West as it brings stormwater from the downtown area to the Arroyo Colorado. In the event that the project for Business 77 does not get funded by FEMA or TIDAM, we have identified alternate projects too, so that we could utilize those funds to, again, leverage or try to continue leveraging some funding for drainage improvements through FEMA and TIDAM, and also some drainage improvements that could be done to re-profile or rehab existing drainage canals. Really quick, these, again, you all are familiar with. The Jefferson Storm Sewer System brings drainage improvements along City Lake to the Jefferson Drainage, and then along also Fifth and 13th Street. Again, the, the dollar amount being allocated for that is $518,000. The next project is Business 77 and 13th. They're in the area of the high school, North High School, and along Business 77 Sunshine Street. The cost for the share of that gets funded, we're still working with TIDAM on that one, would be approximately 1.4, 1.5 million. In-house projects, like I mentioned, and I show this exhibit here really quick, the Northwest Drainage Improvements back between 2009, 2012 did. Uh, the Northwest Drainage Improvements, uh, back between two thousand nine, two thousand twelve, did several improvements in that area. Uh, in studying the area, we're still have some issues here on I Street, uh, where we have frequent, uh, experienced frequent flooding. Uh, what we're proposing is interconnecting the storm sewer system that takes water along Wichita. And the city owns this fifteen-acre tract right here, we, the plan is to, uh, make an RDF, uh, store the storm water that's coming both from this system and Wichita. And then once the peak, because this, all this water is going into the main canal that's, uh, just north of, uh, of Wilson Road, between Wilson Road and Primeta, uh, Primeta Road. Uh, store that water there and then release it gradually once the peak volume has, uh, has subsided. The, uh, the cost for the excavation and doing that interconnection, uh, is estimated at one point four million. Uh, the, uh, other project I mentioned was the West and Commerce Street, again, is the, uh, going in there rehabbing the existing storm sewer system that we have here. Uh, we have, uh, ten-by-ten drainage boxes, uh, down to about thirty-six, uh, forty-two-inch, uh, pipes in here. And then it discharges into the Arroyo Colorado, just, uh, I guess off of Taff Street, uh, Taff, I believe is, I can't see now, but it's somewhere in here. Uh, the old wastewater treatment plant is, uh, at that location, and then the railroad bridge, uh, is at this point. Uh, the, uh, estimated cost for those improvements is six hundred thousand dollars. I'm hoping all these projects pan out, uh, and, but again, if they don't, or the first one doesn't with the Seventy-Seven, we have two drainage improvement projects, uh, uh, already lined up with TIDOM and FEMA. Uh, the first one is Twenty-first Street, uh, again, that, uh, you've all have been made aware, uh, in the past. Uh, storm sewer system along Twenty-first, and it discharges into, uh, Jefferson, uh, at a cost of about the four hundred thousand, uh, that would be our matching portion. Uh, and, or the other one would be the Fifth and Seventh Storm Sewers, uh, improvements, uh, that has a dollar value of about two point seven million. Uh, again, along Fifth and Seventh Street, kind of somewhat parallel to the Ninth and Thirteenth Projects, uh, Ninth and, Ninth and Thirteenth Street Projects. The, uh, what drives these costs is that they have bores going under Tyler and Harrison. So that's, that's why that project dollar, uh, goes pretty, pretty high. Uh, and the other one that, uh, we are considering also is, as funds become available, is to go in, uh, throughout the city, especially those areas that there's no drainage district, uh, that covers. Uh, this one's the Drainage Along, uh, Bass Boulevard, as it heads west to, uh, I'm sorry, it heads east, and then north along, uh, Tam Lane. Uh, going in there, reprofiling the, uh, the S, the cross-section of the ditch, so that we have some additional storage on the canal itself, on, on both sides of the.
That's just east of Hickory Hill subdivision.
Sir, have you all taken account, um, the construction material, like concrete, rebar, all that, like taking like a forty percent increase? Are these figures with, uh, have we put, have we put in a, like a buffer to include that? Because, um, the costs are only gonna go up, right? And they've gone up significantly in the last few months?
Yes, sir. Uh, no, sir, we have not done that. The, the prices that we're using here are the ones that were factored under the Ninth and Thirteenth, uh, Storm Sewer Project, which are pretty recent. But you're right, it's, uh, by the time we go to design and so forth, it'll probably be six to eight months, uh, to go to construction.
Right.
Uh, we might.
And I'm just, the raw material, I mean, the, the.
There's gonna be a premium for contractors, also availability of contractors.
And, and, and projects number one and two, those, those are submitted as grant applications, those have been submitted for some time now. And so those dollar amounts are a little dated. And so there, there may have, may have to be some adjustments. Unfortunately for us, if there is a price increase, it'll be on us.
Yeah, that's right, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
And last but not least, it's your turn, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, I want to thank you for the, uh, the consideration of using the ARPA grant funding, uh, to pay for water and sewer infrastructure. We've been working on a master plan for the better part, and I'm gonna take this off, for the better part of two years now. And that plan, uh, has identified over a hundred and fifty million dollars, at least in a draft form, of sewer infrastructure that will need to be spent over the next twenty years. That funding will be used to fund projects that do one of three things, either to address an existing capacity problem, to provide for future capacity for growth that's coming to Harlingen. And number three, and not least, is to prop, provide for renewal, replacement, or rehabilitation of existing infrastructure that is in failing condition. There are five projects here cumulatively that add up to more than the entire ARPA grant. Uh, we intend to begin design on these projects this year and be ready for construction next year. If during design, at any point, we feel like there's a project in doubt of meeting the December twenty-twenty-four deadline, we can very quickly transition to another project that has already been designed. The highest priority project and the foundation for future wastewater projects are some improvements at the front end of our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, as you're aware, in twenty-seventeen, we completed an upgrade to the treatment plant. That design assumed a ten-million gallon per day, average day capacity. Under peak conditions, it could provide and treat up to thirty million gallons per day on a two-hour basis. We average about five, and so the treatment plant is appropriately sized. What we've discovered over the past three to four years is that our peak flows have hit as high as twenty-five million gallons per day. That's a peak factor of five, sixty-seven percent higher on a per gallon basis than was anticipated in the design. The way to fix that is to go into the system, eliminate inflow and infiltration that happens in a lot of places where we've got clay lines, old brick manholes. But even our most diligent effort and program to do that, uh, is going to take decades to make the significant impact that we actually need today. There's nothing about the plan upgrade done in twenty-seventeen that's at fault, I would have changed that design. Actually, in twenty-sixteen, when the plant was under construction, uh, you will see that we took a lot of excess materials and piled them up and, uh, made a, a berm. The best way to deal with the problem is that any excess flow that you got over the capacity of that treatment plant, you simply remove it. Don't send it to the treatment plant, send it to an equalization basin and store it. When flows subside, you bring it back into the system. Uh, and the work that was done on the last upgrade had that idea in mind during construction, so additional flow that was coming in, that may not have been able to be accommodated as the plant was being, uh, converted from the old plant to the new. Uh, that's in place. The problem and the reason we can't use that now is that the state requires certain conditions for that to be permitted. Either concrete or a membrane liner, you need aeration and other permitting considerations. We're estimating a cost to make that a permitted equalization basin at about two million dollars. Flow comes into a lift station that also serves some headworks functions. This is a project that was designed and constructed well over ten years ago. Uh, not only does it include the pumping, but it includes screening to remove large debris, cloth, beach balls, lumber, all kinds of crazy things that find its way into the sewer. And also, we've got grit removal systems to take out particulates that are not good for the downstream process and can damage equipment. Realizing that we've got a very large peak capacity and realizing that you want to screen it and remove grit before you send it to equalization, our consultant has recommended that those functions be taken out of the lift station and that an above-ground headwork structure be constructed, uh, to do that at the capacity that we are seeing. Uh, that is going to be a fairly complex and expensive structure, uh, and it will also determine and decide the split between equalization and what goes to the existing plant. Total cost estimate our consultant came up with was seventeen million dollars for this project. Uh, that assumes upstate, uh, pricing, that assumes a fully contracted project. As you know, we have capabilities of doing a lot of treatment plant work in-house, so assuming roughly a fifty-fifty split, we think that an appropriate cost for this project is going to be on the order of twelve million dollars. Uh, I show some of these pictures here that are taken recently, we have four aeration basins, we've taken either two or three of them down offline, uh, within the last four years. And each one of them has a significant deposition of this fine sand that's not efficiently captured by our existing process. There's newer technologies that does a much better job at removing that, so that new headwork structure will help avoid this kind of problem. It takes us two full weeks with tedious shovel work and a fifty-five gallon drum and, and a, a lift to remove that. And that's a situation that's not good for our process and equipment. The next project on our priority list, uh, is the rehabilitation of raw water conveyance from, uh, the canal to Town Lake. We've got a five-foot-by-five-foot box that's probably eighty, ninety years old, uh, that has sprouted some leaks over the years. We, from Jefferson Street on to the, uh, onto Town Lake, which serves as our downtown treatment plant reservoir, we've got reinforced concrete pipe, either thirty-six inch or forty-two inch. It all leaks, and we think it's, uh, overdue that we take on this project. But the capacity of this line as it stands isn't sufficient to keep up with the plant, so there will be, need to be some upsizing of that RCP line, uh, with a smoother type of pipe and possibly slip lining that concrete box. Estimated cost here is four point one million based on estimation of, uh, some engineering studies that have been done in the past. You're aware that we've been doing some replacement of asbestos cement water pipelines in the Treasure Hills area, that project is complete. Contractors moved now on to the Pendleton Place area, that project is about fifty percent complete at this point. Once completed, it will be time for us to move on to addressing some of the sewer problems that we address frequently. Broken pipes, locations where we experience frequent clogging, we know we get a lot of infiltration and inflow from, in, locations like this. There are sixteen locations involving approximately sixteen thousand feet of six and eight-inch clay pipelines, sixty-six manholes, primarily brick. Uh, this would also be a pipe burst type of project, uh, costs are escalating, uh, on this type of work, we're estimating six point one million dollars for this effort. Our treatment process involves the use of a coagulant to remove particulates from the raw water that's pumped from the river. Well, that creates a residual sludge that has to be processed and dealt with. On the right-hand side, you see two lagoons for temporary storage of sludge at the downtown location. We have a very makeshift process of dewatering that before hauling it to the Dixieland Plant where it's combined with Dixieland Plant sludge and stored in a lagoon. So this has been accumulating for over ten years, maybe up to twenty, and as you can see, that is starting to fill up, and so we've got to address that. But more than just removing that sludge, there are reconfigurations of this basin to split it in two, so we can take one down and remove sludge from the other, so we don't, we have continuity of operation. Uh, there are also some sludge processing and dewatering infrastructure improvements. Uh, we've got an engineering study that was done, uh, nearly a decade ago about this, and we've escalated that, assuming a twenty percent increase from pricing from twenty-twenty. Uh, we think that's going to be in the neighborhood of five point three million dollars. And last but not least, once the sewer, uh, project using pipe bursting is complete, it's gonna be time to move back again to replacement of asbestos water lines. We've got an area on North First Street located just north of the, the DPS Station on Sunshine Strip involving twenty-eight thousand linear feet of asbestos cement, uh, pipeline that we want to replace using pipe bursting. Uh, estimated cost here is six point three million. Add all these projects up and you've got nearly a thirty-four million dollar combined, uh, project total. And that's roughly half of what has been tentatively placed on a five-year plan. That's a considerable amount of money, and I would note that any funding, uh, that can be contributed from the ARPA grant will not only reduce, but also defer the need for additional revenue to pay for our capital infrastructure improvement program. So that's, uh, the conclusion of my presentation. I do want to thank the Commissioner and City Manager for identifying Water Works as a large recipient of that funding, and, and I'd be happy to answer any questions now, or call me up anytime, I'd be happy to talk about what we're doing.
All right, anybody got any questions? Water and wastewater, it's one of the most important things that we do. All right.
Any, any, any concerns or questions on the proposal, on the breakdown, on the reimbursement for the auditorium, the employee and essential workers allocation? The four million for broadband, the four million for drainage, and the ten million, or the two point one million for revenue recapture?
I, I, again, I'll, I'll just reiterate, um, on, on the Wi-Fi is just, you know, how, what's the plan going forward after we get the thing? And I would say even on the employee allocation, um, you know, it, um, I, there would, as an employee, I would have questions. Full-time employees, uh, I know a lot of them maybe missed employment, I don't know if we, we had employees miss employment, uh, at all. Is that affected, or did, did any of our employees go on, on unemployment and, uh, were out for a significant amount of time? Are we, uh, are we taking care of the ones that were here consistently, like that never missed, or some missed, and, and are they?
We did have some employees that, that did take advantage of the Family First Act, that were out because they could not find daycare.
Right.
For their, for their child. But I would tell you that the vast majority of our employees have been here since day one.
Right, so, so in, in that instance, if we had an employee that left and was being compensated for it, and the ones that stayed, are we, are we, are we applying the thousand dollars to both employees?
I, I think it's, the one thousand dollars is just a plan that I came up with, just to be fair and equal to all our staff, being that there's, everyone is a part of the bigger picture and all the services that we provide, and they all have to work together. I understand what you're saying. Uh, I didn't want to make this any harder on our finance department trying to break it down, so I thought it'd be the easiest thing to do is just make a one simple allocation for every single employee.
Well, and, and again, but so.
Including civil service.
Right, and so when, when you, when you do that, um, I don't want to upset employees that did stay versus the ones that didn't stay.
Well, all, even those employees came back to work, uh, Commissioner, uh, and, uh, so they were out for a period of weeks, but they did come back to work.
Okay. Well, I mean, you asked my concerns, right? That's one of my concerns.
All right, this, this is not styled as an action item.
No, it, it would be part of an amendment, a budget amendment, but, uh, if there are concerns, and we would like to know ahead of time before we submit the budget amendment, because, uh, that'll be the first meeting in June.
Okay, so if you, uh, any, any other questions or, or concerns anybody want to express at this point? On the Zoom call, all right. All right, and, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip ahead and take one action item, I, I didn't realize, I kept looking at Marcia, knowing that I knew that, who she was, but, um, with the mask on and everything, I realized that, uh, Mrs. Marcia Gramley is here on item nine, and I wish I'd, uh, realized she was in the audience earlier. Item nine is a consideration of possible action to accept or deny the donation of one park bench to the city of Harlingen from the Gramley family to be placed at the Hugh Ramsey Nature Park in memory of Mr. Darius Gramley. Javier, you want to present this real quick?
Sure, uh, good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner. Um, we were approached by Mrs. Gramley, and so, um, in visiting with her, she had mentioned to us that her deceased husband, um, used to frequent Hugh Ramsey, uh, quite a bit. And, uh, he would volunteer several hours there at, uh, at the park, helping, uh, maintain the, the vegetation and so on. And so, um, so Ms. Gramley and her family would like to donate a bench in memory of her deceased husband. And so she met with the, um, the two groups out at Hugh Ramsey, and so they recommended, um, to her was to, um, place it at the Lily Pond, uh, area. And I think I have a star next to it, is where, um, I believe the location will be, but it'll be in that area. And so we brought this to you all to either, of course, accept or deny the, the request of the donation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those, any others, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Uh, uh, I want to express our appreciation on behalf of the city, uh, to the Gramley family, thank you so much for this wonderful gift. It'd be a wonderful, uh, way to, uh, to, to remember, uh, Mr. Gramley, so thank you so much.
He was there daily, and, oh, with Mark, our grandkids, everyone enjoys that park. I can see the entrance from my house, we live in the park, we terrace right across, Ed Carey from the park, it's a jewel. Uh, my grandkids love the park, you see people, more and more people because of the pandemic, out there enjoying the outdoors. And, uh, we, we discussed it, he passed the COVID, and when he passed, his children and I discussed the most appropriate, uh, memory, thing to do in his memory. memory, thing to do in his memory, and a bench automatically came to all of our, our members. So we appreciate the acceptance of this, and we're working, whoever we need to work with, insurance maintained and put in a big spot, and that it's taken care of. Thank you so much.
That's a wonderful gift. Thank you, thank you very much. Item five is a consideration of possible action to approve a construction escrow agent to establish an account to be used to manage grant funds. In accordance with an escrow agreement with the Texas Water Development Board, the escrow agent will establish an account for the TWDB Flood Infrastructure Fund Grant for the Ninth and Thirteenth Street Drainage Improvement Projects. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. Through our financial advisors, Hilltop Securities, we solicited bids for the construction escrow agent services to establish these escrow agency funds, for the TWDB Flood Infrastructure Fund Grant Funds. I've attached a, a schedule of fees that we solicited. There were five escrow agents that, that responded. It was Amagi Bank, the Bank of New York Mellon, UMB, US Bank, and Wilmington. It was a tie for, for the two lowest, which was UMB and US Bank. We have had US Bank as a paying agent for some of our older bond issues, so we recommend going with US Bank as they are the, one of the lowest.
Motion for an approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. I think we've, I think we voted, didn't we?
Yes.
All right. All, all right, the motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Item six, consideration and possible action to approve a construction escrow agent to establish an account to be used to manage grant funds in accordance with an escrow agreement with the Texas Water Development Board. The escrow agent will establish an account for TWDB Flood Infrastructure Grant for Regional Flood Protection Planning Study.
And so since these are two grants, they are, they are required to separate escrow accounts. So we went through the same bid process, and it was the same respondents. And so we, we again choose US Bank as the escrow agent for the Regional Flood Protection Plan Study.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion second. Any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seven is a consideration of possible action to approve a resolution nominating VHS Harlingen Hospital Company for designation as a qualified business and enterprise project under Texas Enterprise Zone Program, under the Texas Enterprise Zone Act. Roosevelt?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. Valley Baptist for VHS Harlingen Hospital Company has come to us requesting that they participate in an enterprise own project designation. The state of Texas has a program where if you retain or expand and increase your job base, and you're doing some investment, capital investments, improvements to your facility or building a new facility, then you may be eligible for a rebate of state sales tax paid during that construction period and up to five years thereafter. So Valley Baptist has taken advantage of that state incentive program, which is a great tool for us in terms of economic development, twice in the past probably five, six years. But they're coming to us again because in the next five years, they'll be expending an additional five million dollars on some capital improvements and on new equipment, and expanding their job base at least by ten, ten more employees, and retaining, right now they have over sixteen hundred employees on staff right now. So they are probably the largest private sector employer in the, in the city. Along with that, also I would introduce Will Ramirez. Will is with Ryan. He's a consultant that is helping put together the package for Valley Baptist, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer. We get six project designations for biennium. This would be the first of this biennium. And so I took it to the EDC Board, and the Board of recommended that the City Commission approve the, the resolution nominating Valley Baptist for this project designation. This doesn't guarantee that they're going to get it, but it does put them in, in the competition, if you will. And it's determined by the Office of Economic Development and Tourism at the Governor's Office and controlled by the Comptroller's Office as well.
Motion for an approval.
Just a quick question. Did, how many did we use last biennium?
Two.
Two. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Obviously, we're happy that we're able to, to take this action to support.
Quick note, it's, it's state sales tax that's refunded, not local sales tax.
Correct. We're happy to be able to, to support Harlingen Medical Center in this fashion. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna skip over item eight for a second and go to item ten, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending chapter eighteen of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing the rental fees of the Long Sea Hill Park Pavilions.
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioner. We're bringing this to you all for, for approval or consideration. We've had some requests already for rentals of the, the picnic pavilions over at Long Sea Hill Destination Park. And so we created these rates, and they're, they're similar to what we've charged on the, the other pavilions that we have in the other parks, and so we wanted to keep it consistent. And so our recommendation is a hundred and fifty dollars for the large pavilion for resident, Harlingen resident, and two hundred dollars for non-resident with a fifty-dollar deposit. The small picnic pavilion would be seventy-five dollars for a resident and ninety dollars for non-resident with a fifty-dollar deposit. And we took this item to the Park Advisory Board on April twentieth, and they recommended to bring this to the City Commission for approval.
Are they open right now? The pavilions?
They're, they're open right now.
Because I passed by Wilson, and there's still a sign blocking the road saying they were closed.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. The, the rentals will not be open until June the first.
Okay. So this, okay.
Okay. Can I ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending Exhibit A of Ordinance Number eighteen twenty-eight, and amending chapter eighteen, master fee schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing fees for certain licenses, permits, and other services provided by the city of Harlingen as they relate to chapter thirty-six Parks and Recreation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eleven, consideration of possible action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Harlingen and South Texas Literacy Coalition, and authorize the City Manager to sign the agreement for the installation of the story walk in the City Lake Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. This is an MOU between the city of Harlingen and the South Texas Literacy Coalition to create a story walk around the City Lake Park. And what this would be was, they selected a local author named David Norak, and they're going to be printing his book called The Adventures of Exo and Psy on these big metal signs and placing them all the way around the, the City Lake Park. And this will allow families to walk around the park together and read a story. The plan is for it to be there for two months initially, and then they're going to be moving this exhibit to other parks in the valley. If this goes well, there's a chance that we'll expand this to other parks and possibly have different stories around the City Lake Park. We select the City Lake Park because it's right across the street from the library, and initially it's easier for us to keep an eye on it. The library board and the parks board have both approved this project. Staff recommends approval.
Do you get to proof the story?
Well.
Before it goes out?
Yeah, this is a, this is a story that was selected with our, our youth staff and the South Texas Literacy Coalition.
The story.
But, but yes, it's something that they'll, our staff will be approving before they, they put out there.
Motion for an approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twelve, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution finding that AEP Texas Hinks application to amend its distribution cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied, authorizing participation within, with the city served by AEP Texas, authorizing hiring of legal counsel, finding that city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at the, which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel. Okay?
Mayor, Members of the Commission, City Manager. On April sixth, twenty twenty-one, AEP filed an application for approval of a distribution cost revenue factor. That means they're looking to increase our distribution revenues by fifty-four point five six million dollars, which would be an increase of about two dollars and sixty cents to the average resident. We're asking that the resolution be approved, denying the request until our consultants, Carter Lipa and Thomas Mercado, can review the rates and provide any recommendations to cities. Any costs incurred by the consultants will be reimbursed by AEP, so we're asking that the resolution be approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion or questions? This is kind of the standard procedure with these rate increase programs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the last item except for the board appointments, and then, and then I'm gonna exit the meeting, because I have to be someplace else. And the last time we heard this presentation, it took twenty-five minutes. Maybe he can do it in a shorter period of time. I don't, but then Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tim, Mesmar will, will preside over the balance of the meeting after I call the item. Item eight, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution accepting Valley International Airport's mid-year budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Ron?
Ron?
Okay, I just came off of mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna try and share my screen. Is that show, can you see a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty, it's small, though.
Oh, hang on.
You can't. It's hard to see. It, it's a, go ahead, Ron.
Okay, I apologize for that. I think most of you have already seen most of this presentation, so we'll go through it pretty quickly. Just to start off with, when we did the budget, that was in the July to August timeframe of last year. And as we all know, that was pandemic time with COVID nineteen, so we had an uncertain economy and a dismal outlook. So moving that forward to now, during this mid-year, we've actually got a much brighter outlook, and it's improving with our cash flow as well as our income statement and capital spending. So as the, as the vaccines are available, we have a lot of positive thinking and spending. We had a lot of pent-up demand, and couple that with, we've also landed a airline, an international airline from Mexico, Aero, Aero Bus, and their inaugural flight is tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. So all of these things are actually presenting a pretty good picture for us. So if I look at my screen, and during the reporting period, we said we were going to start cash at about three point seven million, and this year we're going to run it to six point six, and we're well underway towards that. So all, all that is, is just your cash inflows and your cash outflows, mainly from the income statement, from an expense standpoint. And then we also have all of our capital improvements and our capital purchases that are going on. So these are projects that, that we have to work on. And then we offset that with money that comes in, so it's obviously the revenues that are coming in from the income statement, PFC collections, grant money. Grant money is for the capital improvement projects that have previously been approved. And then also, we're fortunate enough to be the recipients of a COVID grant, and that grant extends for four years. And this is the second year of it, and we're going to bring about eight point eight million in for this year. So in total, for this year, we have uses of funds about twenty million dollars, and we have sources of funds of twenty-two million. So we're going to bring our cash position up to about six and a half million by the end of September of this year. The next two columns, they represent the next two periods in the, in the forecasting. And as you can see, we're going to run to mid to low teen millions of dollars in cash. So again, it's the same, same principle that's taking place, so I'll move forward with that. This is actually a very, very good position to be in. So the next slide is the revenues. And when we started this year, we said we were going to be at about three point six million in budgeted revenue. We're actually going to increase that to three point nine million, and that's a two-hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase. The majority of that is coming from commissionable sales and employments, employments generating commissionable sales, I should say. And that is really for the ancillary operations, so the rent of cars, CFC, fuel sales, parking, and then the restaurant and gift. So that, the majority of that is about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars as an increase. The next major thing is a drop in, in revenue, and really it's for the RAP program, which is where we are baiting rents for, mainly for the airlines and for concessions, where if they have a, if they have a mag in place. So that's offsetting the gains that we've had, but nonetheless, we're still going to be up about two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. The next slide is the expenses. And again, on this one, we started out with six point eight million. We're going to run to about seven point two million this year. And there's a couple of things that are happening. One is the marketing. So we're going to increase marketing by two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There's two components of that. One is the PSA and commercials that I'm assuming most of you have seen on TV, where we're going to continue that campaign. And also with landing a, an airline, we have Viva Aerobus that we have made a commitment to them to do advertising as well. The next major one is ground handling services. Well, with Viva Aerobus coming in, we believe that we need to run to a full-time manager at this point. Not only that, with the additional airlines that are coming in, we're going to experience additional help that's required. So that's going to be an increase of about seventy-eight thousand dollars. The two of those combined, they represent about two hundred and fifty thousand of the three ninety-nine, so I don't think it's necessary to go through the rest of the expenditures. Then the next slide is just a summary of what I had said above, which is basically increased employments, commissioner, which generate commissionable sales, and extending of the RAP, which offsetting that is extending of the RAP program. And on the expenses, it's supporting Aero Boat, Viva Aerobus, and continued facilities improvements. There's two slides remaining. First one is the mid-year capital. And this is, the first column represents what we've already been approved. The next one is where we are in the mid, in the mid-year budget. And then the next one is just the delta between the two. And there's a couple of items to note here. One is the FIS restroom upgrade. The FIS, that's the facility where the international flights are going to be coming into, so we had to get them up to standard, so we've increased that one. And then the terminal and FIS building repaint. Originally, we thought it was just going to be a paint, and it was budgeted at ninety thousand. Well, that's increased significantly, but it's needed repairs in order to repair some of the, the walls and I'm assuming drainage issues, things like that. So it'll increase a bit. Then the next page, and here shows all of the items that we are continuing to do to improve the airport. So it's facilities improvements, and you can see here that we had budgeted seven forty-four. We're increasing it to two point eight million. The best thing to note on this is, the lion's share of this is going to be funded by the FAA, so we are pretty much a go on that. We're, we're very happy with that. So that's really the, the end of the presentation. We have a, believe we are in a pretty good position, and we're just asking for approval. So if there's any questions, I'll, I'll entertain those.
And there are any questions of Mr. Mustard?
Yes. Yes.
Well, hearing no questions, then I'll make, I'll need a motion to approve the 2021 mid-year capital budget. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signified by voting aye and raising your hand. Like sign opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so Amanda, I believe we're moving on to item number 12. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, item number 12 is consideration, possible action to approve a resolution finding that AEP Texas.
Number 13, sir. Board appointments.
Board appointments.
Okay, very good. Board appointments, number 13. Any board appointments across? We'll start with Mr. Arribay in one.
No, sir.
Mr. Puente.
None.
Mr. De La Rosa.
None.
Mr. Leal.
None.
Hearing none, then we'll close item number 13, and then Ms. Amanda. It looks like we're all done. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, well, y'all have a most pleasant evening. Drive safe. Continue to stay healthy. Get your vaccinations, wash your hands, still be safe, and enjoy life. Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.